How are you? This is Mary. We're still just gathering in the conference room.
I'm doing well. How are you, Mary?
Good. Enjoying the good weather.
I know. I'm like, too bad I have a meeting.
Okay. We still have just under 10 minutes, but I will go ahead and check who we have on the line. Jim Lumston, are you on? We have Melinda Barron here. Michael Lewis. Nels Roslin. Nigel Long. Steve Beam.
Here. Can you hear me?
Good morning, Steve. We can. Hope you're well. And then how about our Calend team? Do we have any of the Calend team members on? Okay. How about Galliard? All right. Prudential.
Hey, Mary. It's Mike McCann's out here. And then I'll do roll call for the whole team if that's helpful.
That'd be great.
Yeah. So joining from Prudential today will be Greg Williamson, Matt Herman, Aaron Cobal, Mary Conti, Jessica Quinby.
Excellent. Thank you.
You bet.
All right. And then other DST staff members. I know we'll be expecting Alan Jakewood. We'll be taking our minutes. And Reika Krishnan's running go to meeting for us.
Yes, Mary.
Good morning, Reika.
Good morning.
We have Tom Causy here, Patty Hall, and Lauren DeMay. We're expecting Ree Chisholm. Do we have any team members from FOD on the line?
Joan Fonseas here.
Good morning, Joan.
Morning. Morning.
Should be getting started in just a few minutes. Oh, good. So it still is? Okay, good. Good morning. We have just a few more minutes before we get started. I want to check on our roll call for our board members. Jim Lumston, are you on? Michael Lewis. Nels Roslin.
Good morning.
Good morning, Nels. Okay. Nigel Long.
Present. Can you hear me?
Good morning, Nigel. We can.
Okay, great.
And my understanding is that Lorraine Johnson will not be able to join us this morning.
Okay. I'd call the supplemental retirement board trustees meeting. If you'll join and stand and join in our believing in the covered. Tom Causy. Thank you. Our meeting is now called to order. There'll be a public comment period for organizations or individuals to address the board. Continuing with our initiative to increase government transparency, our department has established a policy to record and video official public meetings like this one. I think we're a week behind on that.
No, we're recording.
Oh, great. And this is an effort to increase transparency, accessibility, and accuracy of meetings and the meeting minutes that fall under the authority of Department of State Treasurer. So today, we're recording this meeting to further this initiative. And by the time we meet again, we'll have an updated technology system in the Caldwell Room that will make it even more easier to listen to and participate in. Several requirements that we have to be in compliance with regarding our COVID meeting protocol. When we take a roll call, we'll do so by name, which we've done. Board members, if you leave the meeting at any point, please announce your departure. And if you return, announce your return. And likewise, please state your name before speaking. And we'll take all votes by roll call without objection. Anybody who makes a motion or a second to a motion will be considered a yes vote for roll call purposes for efficiency. And finally, text or any other recorded communications between board members during the meeting, even on personal cell phones are records that are deemed, to the extent they concern the meeting, are deemed to be public records. I'd like to sadly positively notify the board trustees that Nigel Long has accepted an appointment, I believe by the governor, to the very important North Carolina Education Lottery Commission. And will be leaving the SRP board. This will be his last board meeting. He's served on this board since May of 2018. I want to thank him both personally and professionally for his many contributions and the interaction that we've all had with him and his desire to have more strong governance and oversight of these supplemental plans. His transition to the Education Lottery Commission is being finalized and therefore he may serve for another few meetings. But in the event that this is the last meeting, I just wanted to recognize him personally as we are in the front end of this transition. Ironically, of all the things the State Treasurer has responsibility for, the lottery commission is not one of them, which is very ironic, given everything else we do. But just, I'm glad to know that he's there and it gives me an opportunity to publicly lobby that 40% of the lottery proceeds are supposed to go to public school construction. Money should follow the child. And I was on the floor of the House when the lottery passed. That was the original law. And Nigel, I just wanted to say that anything that you can do to get 40% of the lottery to go back to public school construction, not just for new construction, but for those school buildings that have good bones to the V O N E S, that that money can be used for repair and renovation, especially rural North Carolina. So I can tell you that the treasurer and the chair of the local government commission, calls of depopulation, COVID, acts of man, acts of God, all other kinds of things desperately need public school construction money. Some of these are rural parts of North Carolina. So that's my lobbying for the day, Nigel. And just wanted to give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Treasurer Falwell, thank you so much for those kind words. And I certainly understand your passion around that issue. Let me just say, it's been a real privilege and honor to serve on this board, serving your leadership, serving with the great direction and guidance and hard work of the staff and the group members. It's just, I'm particularly impressed with the staff. Just the level of experience, the level of diligence, the great reputation around the country. It's just been a real pleasure. And I certainly have enjoyed serving with my fellow board members. And I think out of this has not only come professional relationships, but I think some personal friendships as well and friendships that I will treasure. So again, thank you, everyone. And it's with sadness, if I were able to serve on multiple boards for the state, I would. But unfortunately, as a commissioner for the lottery, I'm only able to serve on them. But thank you again, everyone. And thank you, Treasurer Falwell, for giving me an opportunity to address the board and the staff.
Thank you. I think we all understand that jealousy is one of the great sins. And before anybody gets jealous, Nigel's pay on the lottery commission is going to double from what his pay has been on the supplemental retirement board. So
It'll be zero times two.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Nigel. Our Ethics Act is ethics awareness and identification of conflicts. Members, you've had the agenda. You've had an opportunity to review the agenda. Does anyone have a present actual potential or the appearance of a conflict of interest regarding the matters that are before us today?
Yeah. This is this is Steve Beam. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Given the board is asked to take action on Wedge Capital today, I want to let the board members know that I do have supplemental employees at Wedge. This will not affect my decision at today's meeting, but I wanted to inform the board if you have a potential conflict or appearance of a conflict. So anything else that
So noted. Thank you so much. I'll now accept a motion to approve the December 3 board meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion?
I move, Steve.
All right. Steve Beam, motion to approve. Melinda's second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Okay. You could express your vote, Treasurer Falwell?
Aye.
Chevella Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you. Jim Lumston, have you joined?
Hey, where is he?
Hi. Is that him? Michael Lewis, have you joined?
I am.
Okay. And is that an aye vote for the minute?
Yes.
Thank you, Michael. Nels Roslin?
Aye.
Nigel Long?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you, members. Item four is approval of the February 15 Audit Subcommittee Meeting Minutes. Do I hear a motion? Melinda's made a motion, second.
Second, Chevella.
Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Okay. Treasurer Falwell?
Aye.
Michael Lewis?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
Nigel Long?
Aye.
Steve Beam?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll now go to item five to read for our legal updates. Just in case I may have skipped it, members, we do have a statement of economic interest that have been updated. Find those in the appendix and be generous if there's any clarifying or that you might have. Someone, if you wouldn't mind, just making sure your phone's muted.
Have a little background noise and conversation. If you could mute your phone if you're not speaking, we would appreciate it.
I think that took care of it.
Thank you.
First, as I discussed in December, we received an audit letter in October from the IRS 457 plan. The audit was specific to the Beacon program and is calendar year 2018. And just as a reminder, Beacon, also known that they integrated into our payroll system, part of the Office of State Controller, and provides payroll services. They agents and departments utilize its services. With the assistance of Ray Sherry and his staff, Beacon provides payroll data, other information As a reminder, we received the audit letter in October 7. Then I responded to the files on October 21 and met with the IRS representative. And also, as I mentioned, in December, at our November 20 meeting with the IRS, represented the board that she found no errors and recommended closing the audit and complimented us on the thoroughness of our December, I said that we've not affected these compliance concerns. And last month, I reflected a letter from the IRS formally closing the concerns or changes to the 457 plan. Are there any questions or comments on that?
This is Chevella. I'm not hearing you really clearly. I don't know if anyone else is having that problem, but I'm not hearing you clearly.
Okay. We'll adjust the microphones that we have in the room here. And if you don't mind.
Yep. Do you want me to do that again? I don't mind doing that again. It's short. I can summarize. We received a letter from the IRS last month to formally close the audit on the 457. And as I mentioned in December, that audit was for calendar year 2018 with the 457 plan and the Beacon subplan. Are there any? Could you hear me better on that one?
Absolutely.
Great. Great. Any questions or comments on the IRS audit? Next, as you know, in December, the board voted to transition custodial services for the Stable Value Fund from Wells Fargo to BNY Mellon. As we discussed in previous meetings, Wells sold its custodian business to Principal and clients are required to transition to a new custodian, whether that's Principal or another firm by mid to late 2021. Since the board's vote in December, staff has worked with Wells Fargo, BNY Mellon, Galliard and others to implement the transition. We've opened accounts at BNY Mellon. We put in transition agreement in place with Wells Fargo and provided direction letters to BNY Mellon and Galliard, the department. BNY Mellon, Wells Fargo, and Galliard have met weekly since the beginning of February. And BNY Mellon drafted a project plan to guide the process. And finally, I want to note that we're working with the plan's auditor, Clifton Larson Allen, on a contract to perform a reconciliation of the transition, which would be in addition to the reconciliation performed by BNY Mellon and Wells Fargo. Clifton, and as background, Clifton Larson Allen performed similar reconciliations in 2016 with following unbundling of the plans and in 2018 for the implementation of Goalmaker 2.0. And finally, the transition will take place on April 1. Are there any questions or comments on the Stable Value Fund transition? Next, I want to provide an update on proposed legislation to provide more flexibility to the board and the department in establishing and adjusting administrative fees for the supplemental retirement plans. As you know, the board passed a resolution in December requesting that the General Assembly establish a process apart from the Administrative Procedures Act for the board and the department to set SRPs administrative fees. The resolution also directed staff to draft a proposed statutory amendment and submit it to the General Assembly for consideration. Staff drafted an amendment and submitted it to the General Assembly. And as required by the resolution passed by the board, the amendment allows fees to be set at a public meeting of the board that is conducted in accordance with the state's open meeting law with at least 30 days' public notice prior to the board meeting and subject to a cap of 2 and 1/2 basis points for the 401K and 457 and 5 basis points for the 403B, which are the current administrative fees for those plans. The amendment was incorporated with only minor revisions into House Bill 168, the Retirement Administra-- the Retirement Administrative Changes Act of 2021. HB 168 was introduced in the House on February 25. And on March 1, the bill passed first reading and was referred to the Committee on State Personnel. Are there any questions about administrative fee flexibility?
And this is the treasurer. Just to be clear, we just things don't come in even slices sometimes. And we'll run a surplus, but the surplus is not quite enough to waive the fees for a whole year and we get into this stub year situation. And this just gives this board, our department, more flexibility so that we don't have to stick our tongue over the finish line, you know, to make sure we got an extra dollar so that we can waive the fees for a whole 12 months. Just makes administratively work easier.
Finally, every other year, going back to 2013, the board retained CEM Benchmarking to provide a benchmarking report for the 401K and 457 plans. The report compares the plan's total cost and investment and performance to CEM's universe and custom peer group. The report uses the preceding five years of data. So for example, the 2019 report from CEM covered the period 2014 to 2018. In your materials, I included a link to the report CEM presented to the board in the third quarter of 2019. I believe most of you, if not all of you, were here for that report and very well, you know, are familiar with it. And so staff recommends contracting with CEM Benchmarking again this year to provide a similar report covering 2016 to 2020. And CEM would present the report to the board later this year at the Q3 or Q4 meeting. The cost of the report would be $30,000, given that the contract would be for more than $25,000. The contract requires the board's approval. And as a reminder, the board approved $30,000 for benchmarking services in this, in the 2020-2021 fiscal year budget for the supplemental retirement plans. And payment would be made in fiscal year 2021-22, following CEM's presentation to the board later this year. Are there any questions or comments on benchmarking services or the recommendation to retain CEM Benchmarking again this year?
Yes, this is Nigel Long. I don't have any objection to the recommendation. Just a clarification question. Were there other vendors considered? And if not, why? And if so, CEM, why were they the chosen service provider?
I think it's due to the familiarity with our plans and the fact that they've been around since 2013 with that. There was not a formal bid, wasn't required. That being said, I mean, the board certainly can, I mean, we can investigate other vendors prior to prior to this contract. Mary, are you
Yeah.
familiar with the marketplace for that?
The only other comment that I would have, and Nigel, I think it's a great question. So CEM does do the benchmarking for the entire department, not only for SRP, but also the portfolio within IMD as well as the administrative function within RSD. So we do have relationship pricing. So we have felt fairly confident that we have a competitive fee. And then, of course, they do have our historical data so that they can provide that five-year track record. So not only the one year, but the five year as well. As far as other providers, I'm not aware of others, but I will say that I haven't, you know, done an affirmative search. CEM seems to be the industry leader and that's who we're familiar with.
Okay, thank you. And again, I don't have an objection to the recommendation. I just wanted some clarity around how we selected the vendor. Thank you.
Sure.
Nigel, I want to chime in. I was here when we first made the decision to hire CEM for our first evaluation. And I have noted with every evaluation we have gone through, they've always identified something that we can do to improve what we're doing. I mean, and every year I mean, and every year, the figures have been getting better and better and better. So I highly endorse these folks. They're really good.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Tom Causey, we also have a 20-year relationship with the pension using CEM, too. We've had very good success using them and use their ideas as well to improve the pension.
Great question, Nigel. And as you just heard from Tom and Melinda, this relationship is pre-Dale, pre-Janet and almost pre-Ridget. So it goes back several treasurers ago, so.
Great, thank you.
So this does require the board's approval. And just to repeat, staff recommends approving a contract with CEM Benchmarking for a benchmarking study and report to the board later this year.
Let me take a bow.
With that, we need a motion to approve staff's recommendation to engage further contract with CEM Benchmarking.
The move.
Second.
And we have a motion, a second, a further discussion. Hearing down to the clerk of Calhoun.
Okay, Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Melinda Barron.
Aye.
Michael Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you. Nels Roslin.
Aye.
And Steve Beam.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Next is number six, amendments to plan documents.
There are two sets of amendments in your meeting materials. One is to implement or to amend the plan documents to incorporate the RMD waiver from last year. That's going to apply to all three plans. The other is some amendments to hardship distribution provisions in the 401K and 457, I mean, in 403B, 401K and 403B. And the references to attachments two and three in my memo are reversed in regards to the 401K and 403B plan document amendments. First, with the 2020 RMD waiver, the CARES Act included a waiver of the required minimum distributions for 2020. The waiver was implemented for the supplemental retirement plans as of April 10th of last year. The plan documents should be amended to incorporate the waiver, and your materials include provisions for all three plan documents in attachment one, and these provisions are adapted from a sample amendment provided by the IRS. Are there any questions about the RMD waiver provisions? Then, next, the hardship distribution provisions. Once again, these are included, the amendments are included in your materials, and they relate just to the 401K and 403B plan documents. The federal regulations covering hardship distributions for the 401K and 403B plans include safe harbor reasons for permitting hardship distributions. And just as background and as a reminder, supplemental retirement plans rely on those regulatory safe harbor. We've implemented those through prudential processes. And the main changes in the proposed amendments that you had before you involve updating the plan documents, plan document provisions to the current regulatory language. In particular, there's a seventh safe harbor provision to cover expenses and losses related to FEMA declared declarations, and three of the other six safe harbor reasons cover expenses related to a participant's primary beneficiary, as well as the participant and in some cases, others. And just as background, you may remember, although we haven't done this recently, that if, for example, there's a hurricane, we would wait for the IRS to declare a major, well, FEMA to declare a major disaster, and then the IRS to say, all right, you can implement these special loan and distribution provisions. This cuts out the second part of that for the need for the IRS to step in and say, yeah, and now you can implement, based on that, implement distribution, special hardship distributions based on FEMA's declaration. The FEMA safe harbor provision has been, has been in effect, but it's been used, I believe, only twice, and both of those times were since the beginning of this year. And that's probably due to the availability of CARES Act and other disaster-related provisions prior to this year. But this provision going forward, not only being consistent with what we've implemented with safe harbor provisions under the Treasury regulations, but it also will be, expedite the process of disaster-related hardship distributions. There's one other change in the hardship distribution and document that I want to suspend, participating included the deletion. So I'm bringing this back to the board to officially approve the cleanup of this provision. You'll see that deletion in your board materials. And there's been no effect on the operation of the plans in that regard. Are there any questions or comments about hardship distribution? I'm going to approve of the plan document amendments as included in the attachments to the board.
This is Nels. I recommend approval.
I can help.
Steve, I'll second.
Question, a second. Need further discussion? Hearing down from Calhoun.
Okay, Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Chevella Thomas.
Aye.
Melinda Barron.
Aye.
Michael Lewis.
Aye.
Nigel Long.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we're on to item seven, just for a discussion of administrative rulemaking puzzle not to be voted on.
That's right. As we discussed in December regarding the resolution for administrative fee flexibility, the board and the department have adopted administrative rules establishing administrative fees for the plans. And most, if not all of you, were probably here for that process a few years ago, for 2018, 2019, I believe. The fee rules were adopted pursuant to the rulemaking authority of the board and the department and the requirements of the Administrative Procedures Act. Staff recommends a similar approach for other aspects of the plans. So the plan for today is to provide some background on rulemaking and an overview of staff's recommendation and to receive any feedback or questions that board members may have. Then at the May meeting, staff will present proposed rules for you to consider and hopefully vote on. The proposed rules have been reviewed internally, and as I'll mention later, they were reviewed by several external groups to solicit their input. Board members will have an opportunity today and in May to ask any questions, provide any input on the rules. To the extent you have questions or input today, we'll take that back and address those going forward and then present the actual rules in May. So Reka, next slide. North Carolina's Administrative Procedures Act regulates state agencies' discretion in the implementation of their statutory authority. And in particular, the APA restricts an agency's ability to act without a rule. In the APA, the agency is required to adopt a rule pursuant to the APA. In addition, the APA establishes a process that an agency is required to follow in order to adopt a rule. At a high level, the APA's process for adopting a rule has five stages. An agency, in our case, the board and the department adopts or drafts a draft or proposed rule. The proposed rule then is published on the department's website and in the North Carolina Register. And the Register is a publication of the Office of Administrative Hearings, and it's used to provide notice of proposed and final rules. The public is given at least 60 days to comment on the proposed rules. The agency then, third, the agency then adopts the final version of the rule, which, fourth, is then sent to the Rules Review Commission for approval. And finally, following approval by the RRC, the rule becomes effective on the first day of the following month unless at least 10 people file written objections to the rule by the end of the day following the RRC's approval. And Reka, you can go to the next slide. The state statute that creates the board also authorizes the board and the department to establish rules. This satisfies the APA's requirement that an agency has to have express statutory authority to adopt rules. And as I mentioned earlier, and as many of you probably remember, the board and the department adopted rules to establish administrative fees for the plans. So to summarize that rulemaking process for fees, and just to refresh your memory of that, the board and the department adopted draft or proposed rules in December of '18 and then adopted final rules in April of '19. The fee rules became effective on June 1st of '19, not July 1st, as in the presentation deck. And as a reminder, as I said earlier, the admin fees are two and a half basis points for the 401K and 457 and five basis points for the 403B. All right, Reka, you can move to the next slide. The proposal from staff is to codify certain existing plan provisions and policies as rules. The rules would not impose additional duties or restrictions on participants or employers. In fact, staff has solicited input on the proposed rules from League of Municipalities, Association of County Commissioners, CNIC, and the School Boards Association. And so far, we have not received any questions, concerns, or proposed changes from any of those organizations. Three of the organizations, in fact, expressly responded, and the other didn't respond. Instead, the value of this approach is to provide additional process for participants, additional process for employers, on the plan's features and requirements that affect them most directly, and to address any APA issues that a participant or employer may raise. To be clear, we have not received and do not anticipate receiving any concerns from participants or employers, which is consistent with the responses from the groups we reached out to. But rulemaking will address any APA issues that may be raised going forward to the extent that the proposed rules cover what a complaint may be on from a participant or employer. And that's, once again, if for any reason, and we don't anticipate this, for any reason, such concerns are raised. The slide also lists, slide four also lists the main areas covered by the proposed rules. And as you can see, these are the kinds of topics that would most directly and substantially affect participants and employers. All right, Reka, you can move to the next slide. For the next two slides, we'll talk about, or the final two slides, we'll provide an overview of the process or the hoped-for process. The next two slides are, like I said, are what we expect, and that's always contingent on input from other parties, including the Rules Review Commission, members of the public, et cetera. As I mentioned, staff will present the proposed rules in May. And just like today, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions and provide input on the rules and the process. The difference is, in May, you will have the proposed rules in front of you, so it'll be more specific. But we just wanted to introduce the topic today, as I mentioned earlier. We'll try to get those rules to you well in advance of the May meeting, so you'll have plenty of time to read over them. They're not that long, but still, this is something that, a topic that the board doesn't address very frequently. So we'll try to get those rules to you in plenty of time to go over them. And then, in May, if the board's satisfied with the proposed rules, either as presented by staff or as modified by the board, then the board will have the opportunity to adopt the rules. And if the board adopts the proposed rules on May 27th, staff will send the rules to the Office of Administrative Hearings for publication in the July 1st issue of the North Carolina Register. Also, on July 1st, we will post the proposed rules on our website. And if a public hearing is requested by the public or otherwise held by the board, the earliest date the hearing could be held is July 16th. The 60-day comment period would run through August 30th. Reka, you can move to the next slide. And so next, the board would hold a meeting that we received and also to adopt the final rules. Staff would send the final rules to the Rules Review Commission by September 20th for consideration at the RRC's October 21st meeting. And if the RRC approves the rules and there's no public objection to the approval, the rules would become effective on November 1st. And Reka, you can move to the next slide. That's an overview of the, and at the very end, you'll have this, comments, do you have?
This is Nels. Reed, thank you for the presentation. My experience as agency rulemaking can often be a long, complicated, drawn-out process. And in looking at the board's authority in statute, the statute you referenced for administration of the plans, it says the Department of State Treasurer and the Board of Trustees shall have full power and authority to adopt rules and regulations for administration of the plan as long as they're not inconsistent with the provisions of the article. Just my non-lawyer read of that, it's very broad and gives us a lot of discretion internally to set policies and guidelines. By moving into this process, are we considering a process that just makes things more drawn out and more complicated if we need to make rule changes? And what I remember is in 2020 with the federal government CARES Act on the COVID rules, that we internally were able to act pretty quickly on those changes. Make the process more complicated if we had other kind of policy issues we had to execute, administer, address in short order.
Thanks, Nels. Those are great points and ones that we've considered internally, not just for SRP, for SRP, but department-wide over the last few years. And you're right, as we saw with administrative fees, you get the protection, if you will, of having a rule, you also sacrifice some flexibility. And so, we're looking for flexibility, you know, the statutory change to give us more flexibility with regards to admin fees. You know, reading of the statute is that, you know, we, we do have broad authority. And the approach, and so, we balance, we've tried to balance internally, once again, not just for SRP, but more broadly through the department, the trade-off between flexibility and providing some, some, some protection, if you will, if there, if we do have a, you know, a concern or a challenge raised about some of the, you know, some of the provisions or the processes. That being said, well, first, let me say, you, you're, you know, probably have a lot, like, sure, you have a lot more experience than I do with the rules, and my experience has been, the rulemaking process, and I will, I will confirm that it has been a long process. This is, this is actually, to get to this point, you know, we've been, it's been a couple of years. We, I've been through two rounds of the rules with staff at, for the RRC, they've been great, and they, they've looked at these, the rules that you'll, you'll see in May, and I've incorporated their, their feedback as well. The other thing I'll say in regards to this, you know, the, once again, based on, on feedback throughout the process, as well as balancing this trade-off between flexibility and, you know, just at a high level, flexibility and protection, is the rules, even though they are more specific than our, well, than our rules today, which there aren't, you know, we don't have any rules except for the admin fee, they are still at a, they're still at the level where it should not significantly hamper the board's ability to act. For example, this is, as the presentation, I believe there was a, one of the topics that I put in the presentation was investments. And as you know, you consider investments every single quarter, and you need to be able to make changes quickly. The, the investments are at a high level and wouldn't, they don't get down into the level of, here are our, here are our 11 white label funds, you know, for the 401K and 457, here are managers, that sort of thing. Even with the, you know, something I found out that, you know, forms, for the most part, need to be in rules, and my first thought was, wow, that's going to be very unwieldy to do that every time we want to change a form. But once again, you'll, as you'll see, you can address at a high level what's in forms, to the extent that it's not going to, it's not gonna, it shouldn't limit us in our ability to, to, to change forms. And the, you know, the, the participation, for example, the participation requirements in the plans, those are incorporated in, into rules, you know, to the extent that they're, and the value would be to the extent that they're not already in statute. But once again, those are not things that are going to change, would change very quickly. But I, I do understand, appreciate that trade-off between flexibility and protection. Tried to address that with these rules, with the input of others. And that's one of the things, you'll see when you, with these rules, and you'll be able to say, yeah, well, we're comfortable with this, the, where this trade-off is now, or no, we think that's gonna, gonna limit us too much and incorporate that feedback. And if there is that level of feedback at, at the May meeting, when we, when the board reviews and comments on the specific rules, then, you know, we'll, we can take that back and, and bring some other rules to the board, you know, some revised rules to the board in, in Q3.
So, Reed, would it be appropriate, or is there any prohibition from sharing the rules with board members now? I know we wanted to, you know, it can become overwhelming very quickly, right? Because this is a, a pretty significant, lengthy, detailed process. But if board members have an interest, you know, knowing that we haven't yet had the comment period, that might help to answer some questions. I would just throw that out there as something to consider.
I can, I can send them, I can send them now, I mean, we don't have to delay the meeting, I can send that and then come back to it later if, if there are any comments.
Yeah, just as a, and FYI, again, not for consideration in the meeting, but just if there is.
Certainly, I'll hold the meeting. Oh, okay, oh, yeah, yeah, sure. Absolutely.
This is the Treasurer, just to add on to what Nels said, just to reset my thinking. How many rules do we have in place now?
Uh, we have two. One rule for the 401K and 457 admin fee, and one for the 403B fee.
And that's it?
That's it.
And, and the plan's been around for how many decades?
Oh, the 4, um.
Let me generally.
The 401K's been around since the mid-'80s.
Okay.
457, longer than that. Now, was it, the 457 had rules apparently in the '80s, and those were repealed, I don't know the details, but.
Okay. So, we really only have one rule.
Right, fees.
Both associated with fees. We've never had rules before. My concern, adding to what Nels has said, now that I've thought about all this, is that I just don't want to confuse activity with accomplishment. That's always a big thing for me. He's exactly right. Anytime that you go through this process and you change a period or a comma, there's a chance you gotta go all the way back, you gotta start at go again. And I'm concerned now that Nels brought this up about the unintended consequence of us doing something and then getting sued in OAH, and they say, why didn't you have a rule for this? You have a rule for X, Y, and Z, but why didn't you have a rule for this? And so, I just think we need to cautiously proceed about all of this, since it's not like we have 27 rules and we need 29 rules. We don't, we have basically one rule that affects fees and two different plans. And I just think we need to measure 10 times and cut once, so that we don't open ourselves up to an unintended consequence. I could see a scenario possibly where we divorced from a manager, and the manager challenges our ability to do that because we don't have a rule. So, I can see a lot of that. So, I know that we, we put a lot of work into this. I'm not opposed to it, I just think that we need to proceed very, very cautiously.
Thank you, Treasurer Falwell. If I just could do a quick follow-up.
Yeah.
Back to 2020, Congress passed changes in laws that affected our portfolio, IRS engages in changes that affect, and other federal agencies affect our policies and guidelines where we have to act quickly. And going back to 2020, within like 60 days, we were able to have a very healthy debate, and we made some policy changes. I'm worried that with this new process, it, what I'd like to hear a staff report or feedback on, would that, would that have taken two years to implement? And which I don't think any of us want, but those unintended consequences about the process, we need to just keep in mind, please.
And I, Nels, this is Treasurer again, I, I agree with that. In addition, and this is not a political statement, because it can happen with both parties, it seems like federal government is getting more active, active, becoming more activist on these types of subjects, and, and sometimes we hear about them after they're already done, sometimes we hear about them through NASRA and NAST beforehand, but, but I agree with you, and I don't think Congress, regardless of who's in power, is getting less activated about regulations regarding supplemental retirement plans. I think.
Treasurer, this is Tom Cossey. Treasurer probably knows a lot about this. The, we had something in the pension called the Contribution-Based Benefit Cap, and we didn't have rules, and now we've adopted rules, and a lot of that involved dozens of lawsuits, and, which has taken a tremendous amount of staff time, Department of Justice time, lawyers, and it's, it's, it's a mess right now, and then we didn't have rules. And so, that's where, you know, we need the experts to let us know, where do we need a rule, where we don't, we need a rule there. Apparently, we needed a rule, and it's just, it's just been exhausting. It's really been exhausting to have dozens of lawsuits coming our way constantly, every, every day still, when I come, when I come in, I have another, another legal document with the, that's an inch thick to read to, on another lawsuit, or, you know, to move to the next step, and it's just, it's just ridiculous for us.
Are there, are there any other comments or questions that, Nels, appreciate the, the feedback, and we'll provide a report at the next meeting, but I want to, about the, regarding your request, but just to be clear with that, the CARES Act implementation from last year, and if we'd had rules in place, would, would that have hindered our, our quick action, or the board's quick action last year?
That's correct.
Okay.
Let me just, Treasurer again, just let me add to what Tom said, in case you didn't wake up thinking about what contribution cap acronym means, it's pension spiking. It's normally people in power or people who know people in power who are able to get their incomes up in the last four years of their service, and it hugely impacts their pension payout, so over their lifetime, $13,000 for a 50, for a person who makes, a 50-year-old, $13,000 change in their compensation, can result in a half a million dollar spike. That's just how much leverage there is when you look at these. And typically, as I said earlier, it's not about the custodian that gets to be the lead custodian, or the assistant principal gets to be the principal, it's typically very, it's only applies to people who make over $100,000. And, and the reason we get sued a lot is that the people who approve these transactions, even though we told them that we can work with them to let them understand the consequences of these votes by their governing boards, they never seem to do that. So, they just approve these things, and then they get these massive bills from us for $300,000, and bail to the local school district, and, and so, they just sue us. And so, I know that's more explanation than the board needed, but I just wanted to describe to you how nuanced that one is, and how laborious it's been to, to offend these, and this law was put into, was requested by the Treasurer's Office under Treasurer Cowell, and my job is to, I agree with the spirit of what she did, and my job is to enforce it, and we suffer the consequences of it time and time.
I have a question. This is Steve.
Yeah.
Related to this, and maybe, Tom, you can comment on it as well. Would a rule, if we had adopted a rule, would it have impacted these lawsuits? Or is it more of a state, a law, legal change, or a rule that would, you know, from, with, we adopt all of these new rules, would that prevent something from happening? Or is that, I'm just curious, in this current case, if the rule, if there had been a rule adopted, would it have eliminated many of these lawsuits?
This is Tom.
Uh, I think it would help on, on some of those lawsuits, but like the Treasurer said, you know, they, some of them are using the fact that we don't, didn't have a rule, and now we do, and then others, you know, arguing about the actual law itself. So, it would help with some of the lawsuits, but definitely not all, all of the lawsuits.
And Steve, I'll just add to that regarding this particular matter, that plaintiffs obviously want to win, and they try every possible way to win, that's their job, and they're doing their job. And so, they got their, they sort of tried this approach where you couldn't do what you did, previous Treasurer Cowell or Treasurer Falwell. Couldn't do what you do because there wasn't a rule, and somewhere along the process, at the lower level, some judge said, well, that sounds right, and then, and now we're in, we're playing defense through the appeals, through the board in North Carolina. So, you know, whoever that judge was at that lower level may have not even known the consequences. Well, a rule, that sounds, rules are virtuous, right? There's nothing, not virtuous, virtuous about a rule. And that's when I came to the Treasurer, and the first one of these that was presented to me, we had not done anything on rulemaking on this pension spiking issue, and I said, I don't care if some Supreme Court decides we didn't need a rule at all, because we're in this vortex, over almost a dozen, two dozen cases now, we put a rule in place. So, there's been no issues, and so, anyway, as Reed said earlier, finding that balance and making sure that we don't confuse activity with accomplishment or preventing us from having the flexibility that we need or finally for. All good remarks, thank you. If nothing else, we'll give the, turn the agenda over to Item 8, and Michael McCann, Matt, and Greg, Prudential.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, and thank you for the opportunity to provide our fourth-quarter update today. You know, before we dive in, the first thing I wanted to make sure to reference was that prudential speed reduction went into effect, effective 1/1 of 2021, and that was communicated to all participants, and so, those per, lower fee, would use to see that fee in their first-quarterly statement that'll go out here, the board, and share a little bit in the data integrity of what we do to protect participant and plan information. So, joining me today is Greg Williamson. Greg's our Vice President of Information Security, and every quarter, we meet with your staff to review a lot of the things that we're doing in the cyberspace around data integrity. So, as an offshoot of that, we thought it would be good to have a quick conversation with the board on that. So, Greg, if you're out there, can you, I'll hand it over to you.
Here, thanks, Mike. Hopefully, everybody can hear me.
We can, thank you.
Yep, yes, all right, perfect. So, thank you, everyone. Yeah, just wanted to spend a few minutes giving a brief overview of our cybersecurity and anti-fraud programs. I think since the last time the board's gotten an update, as Mike alluded to, a lot has changed, right? And we've done a lot of investments, so let me kind of give that brief overview. You know, we take security very seriously at Prudential, and as everybody knows, security is a big industry topic right now. It's a, it's a big topic in any industry at this point. How do you protect customers? How do you protect employees? How do you protect the data that you have from hackers who are trying to steal that data and use it, use it for evil? So, we've invested quite a bit the last few years, we're talking a pretty substantial amount of money. We've also increased our resources, dedicated resources, several hundred resources across the company that are focused on cybersecurity, that are focused on our policies, on our audits, on our capabilities, on our risk assessments, and our defense platforms, on how we protect ourselves from those trying to get in and try to take over our customer accounts. So, we put that program in place, expanded that program, it's a program we continuously invest in. It's a program we continuously invest in, and everything we do, we kind of use this terminology called shift left, so whether we're building new product, or whether we're building new policy, new operating models, our security is built in from the beginning of those capabilities. And that's one of the core things that makes our security program better and more integrated in everything we do. Couple of things I want to mention, Mike touched on it. We do meet regularly with the North Carolina staff. We have a minimum quarterly meeting where we go in detail, process around our new security programs, new investments, any sort of activity we're seeing in terms of incidents. And we have those regular meetings, and we talk through any type of concerns on our side, concerns from their side. It's pretty interactive, and this is actually a great part of our program, is getting, sharing that information on both sides. You know, we also meet ad hoc with those teams. As things come up, we want to make sure we're sharing that outward. We want to make sure we're sharing any intelligence we're getting in terms of attacks against the program, and that's important to us. We are, we try to be as transparent as possible with that in terms of the cases we're seeing, what we could do better, what employees could do better, what's working, that type of thing. That's very important to us. So that's kind of our overview of the program. I think that communication is critical. I wanted to touch on a few key things, and I'm going to focus on really kind of how we protect our customers for just a minute or so. As I mentioned, we've done a number of investments around security. Over the last two years, three years, we've put pretty substantial capabilities in place to protect customers' accounts. As we've seen, you know, threat actors have shifted and trying to figure out, okay, how can I actually take over an individual retirement account and remove the funds from those accounts? That's obviously a concerning thing to all of us as participants, trying to figure out how that can be protected. So a couple of things we do. First and foremost, we make sure, one of our number-one goals, is that in as many of those cases as possible, any of those attempts, we're the ones who are identifying them. We have teams that are dedicated to identifying that. We have our frontline staff, our call center staffs, who are trained throughout pickup on those red flags of a fraudster calling in and looking differently. And then we have a number of technologies. I want to highlight briefly a couple of those technologies. Late, early last year, we invested, started to invest in a technology around biometrics in our call center, enabling us to better detect repeat fraudsters calling in and shift those calls immediately to a specialized team that can handle those calls and address the fraudster, the attempts, in a better manner. That's substantially helped us identify fraud quicker in the process. On the flip side of that, it's also helping us to simplify the authentication process. So as our callers, as your employees are calling in, as your participants are calling in, we are actually able to verify them in real time as we enroll them into that program. So instead of going through a long authentication process, in a lot of cases, those people who are enrolled and do frequently call, when they call back, they will get a much simpler process. And that's important to us. As we're rolling out a lot of these capabilities, we want to make sure we balance that participants can actually interact with us and do what they need to do with the security components. We do not want to make it so difficult that the good consumer, the good employee cannot actually do what they need to do. So that's where a lot of our investments are at then, is identifying fraud more effectively while we're actually protecting the customer and simplifying the process. That biometric tool has been a tremendous example of how we're investing pretty heavily in the space. There's a number of other things we've implemented, multi-factor authentication across all of our channels, both on our web channel and in our call center channel. And that's helped to simplify, again, simplify the authentication, but also strengthen the authentication. Customers go to do things that maybe deemed risky, we want to step them up, we want to give them a little bit more of a strong authentication to help protect that account. Also invested in a number of intelligence technologies, those type of risk scoring and analytics-type technologies, artificial intelligence, to look for patterns of calls and web activity that's going on, so that we can detect that in real time as it's occurring. Again, in the detail, we do go into detail with the North Carolina staff on a lot of this in terms of, you know, what we're doing, how we're doing it, and what we're doing, what changes we're making to help protect customers. Last thing I want to mention, and see if there's any questions, specific to the fraud programs. We also implemented a couple of years back what we call our fraud loss protection policy. This means that if we do have fraud, if a customer does have fraud on their account, we stand behind all of the investments we make, and the fact that it is, we believe it's a big part of our job to protect those accounts, and we will reimburse those accounts, you know, if there is fraud on the account. And that's important to us, right? That's how we stand behind, you know, the investments we're making to these programs. And it's how we give some assurance to the participants that, hey, if there is an issue, if somebody hacks them, if somebody takes over their account, we're standing behind it, we'll make it right. So that, again, that's a snapshot of our program. I'll stop there and see if there's any additional, any questions.
Any questions?
This is Melinda. This is a topic that I've been consumed with, especially as a member of the Audit Subcommittee, because if we can't protect our accounts, and we're not doing our job. And maybe I have missed something, but have you all considered adding voice authentication for your security purposes?
So we do. It's a good question. That is what I'm alluding to, the voice biometrics in our call center. We do have that for security purposes. You know, our customers, as they call up, we rolled that out, started to roll that out last year. As they call in, we're gathering their voices, and we use that for future authentications when they call back.
Okay. Because in my Vanguard accounts, I'm supposed to say my voice is my password, and I thought, well, this is kind of interesting, maybe I'll bring it to the board here. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we use a similar approach. We have a different, slightly different user experience, you know, but very similar, probably almost the same technology.
Thank you.
Other questions about this topic? Some of you may know that last fall, I guess, somebody called Prudential to get into my accounts, and, but for, they stumbled on a email address they were in, except for that one thing. And I don't say that anecdotally. I say that because I had an opportunity through an investigator to actually hear the phone call of the person who called to impersonate me. So this is a very, very serious issue, and we need to, we need to take it seriously. Further concern, and maybe this is being addressed at SRP, I'm not quite sure where we are with it, but as we have constantly talked about asset retention and losing assets when people retire, I'm directing our staff today to double down and debrief me, and will later debrief the board, about any organizations that may have access to our data, of who's retiring and who has these accounts. Not just from an asset retention standpoint of keeping the money here for as long as they live at these unbelievable rate, administrative fee rates, but that's also another way. If somebody has access to who our retirees are, or who are going to be our retirees, then that is like, you know, a little bit halfway toward somebody, that means this data is now in the hands of somebody else.
It's the golden egg.
Right. So these breaches may not be coming from us or anything associated with us. It may be coming through a leakage of this information to another organization, who's somewhere, somebody in that organization may be doing what they did, tried to do to me. And I'm not going to overplay this in my personal situation, but you hear a recording of somebody impersonating you, and they were once, they just, there was just a little gap, a little hesitation, they gave the wrong email address, and it stopped. But then it would've been really easy to have had the right email address. They had everything else. So anyway, just, I want to make sure that we combine this topic of what was just discussed with also thinking about our asset retention. And I'll just, I'll just say it out loud, it could be a credit union that's getting a hold of our information about who's retiring. That's why there's a high preponderance of the, probably of the money that leaves here that goes to a credit union, for example. So just want to figure out if we can solve a couple of things at one time on this topic, so.
Continue. All right. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. And Greg, thanks so much for joining today. Really appreciate the update. Is that, does everyone else hear that background noise?
Yeah, it just started. Here we go.
Okay. All right. So in the interest of time, I'm going to be brief with my comments, and then turn it over to Matt Herman here in a couple of moments to give an update from the activity of the 18 dedicated field counselors. So Reka, if you could go to Slide 4, I'll keep my comments all to Slide 4. Slide 4 is pretty much an executive summary of the rolling history of the last 13 months across the key metrics of the plan. So what I'd like to share in terms of plan health, if you compare 1231 of 2020 versus 1231 of 2019, really, the key themes are the following. Total participant balances are up 13%. Average account balances are up 11%. The active participation rate remains steady above 33% in spite of, you know, some headwinds last year with the pandemic of folks temporarily stopping their contributions. The active participation rate never did dip below 33%. The average monthly deferral rate is up 7%. The Goalmaker usage remains strong and steady, both within folks that are in Goalmaker and also your new participants electing Goalmaker. 67.98% of all members participate, all members are participating in Goalmaker right now, and 93.69% of all new members are electing Goalmaker. Another nice trend is the number of outstanding loans dropped 7% from 2019 to 2020, even with 804 of those loans being CRD loans from the coronavirus relief. Total distributions were up 895 million in total distributions in 2020 versus 716 million in 2019, but 253.8 million of those distributions were CRD distributions from coronavirus relief. So the overall percentage of unique participants taking a distribution versus the total unique participants in the plan, it remains steady. If you look at a trend line of trying to go back the last couple of years and looking at the total unique percentage of folks that take a distribution versus your overall plan population, that number has stayed steady. It was 13% in 2018, 14% in 2019, and 14% in 2020. So that's something to continue to monitor as we continue to see more and more of the baby boomers leaving, but that trend line has stayed, has stayed steady overall. And then one other nice thing, too, in terms of rollover outs, we actually saw a slight decrease from 2019 to 2020. Total rollover outs decreased 8% last year, where it was 366.1 million in 2019 and only 337 million in 2020. And then net cash flow did increase. So in 2019, it was a negative 6.6 million, and in 2020, the net cash flow increased to a negative 153.5 million, but I believe most of that is attributed to the influx we saw with all the CRD withdrawal activity. And then the last thing I mentioned before I handed over to Matt Herman, we had 33 new employer adoptions in 2020, 20 employers added contribution accelerator, and then we had 20 employers that either added, changed, or enhanced their employer contributions. So in spite of all of the headwinds around, you know, the budgetary issues that a lot of the subplans are facing right now, to date, we have still not had any employers either stop or lower their employer contributions, but it's something that we're actively monitoring and reporting back to staff. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Matt for a field update.
Michael, just, this is the Treasurer, just a couple of clarifying points.
Sure.
The 368 down to 320, 331 million, what was the, what was the context of that again?
I think you're referring to the drop in rollover outs. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't catch the context. Just repeat that.
Yeah, just, yeah, just something that we actively have monitored and reported out to the North Carolina Board for years, is that it was one of the first times that we've seen recently where rollover outs have actually decreased year over year versus increase.
And others in this room, our focus on where you should, the fact that to reduce the anxiety, let people know they can leave these plans in till the day they die, and then some, I guess, if there's such a thing. Is that, all that working?
Yeah, I definitely think that it's another arrow in our quiver in terms of trying to get out in front of participants long before they separate from service, that they know that they can keep the assets in this plan. And then through all the work of the board in terms of the administrative fees, R fees, the custody fees, and the investment management fees, it's going to be, they're going to be very hard-pressed to find a better program anywhere else where they would be able to roll their assets to. So it's just continuing to get that message out in front of them through all of our different mediums, and really never stop that message, because we're still amazed when, you know, Matt's teams meeting with folks, how many people still think in the back of their minds that once they leave service, they need to do something with these assets. So it's just, it's a never-ending battle.
Okay. Lastly, you mentioned Goalmaker a moment ago. Is Goalmaker unique to us or unique to you?
Goalmaker is a unique service that Prudential offers, but it's widely adopted in the vast majority of our plans. So it's something that almost all of our governmental plans use a feature like Goalmaker. Where North Carolina's unique in our Goalmaker service is that a couple of years ago, the North Carolina plans enhanced their Goalmaker. You were one of our first clients, actually, our first client to go to our enhanced Goalmaker product, which offers a three-by-nine grid of 27 portfolios that go into the post-active working years. But yeah, it's a product that's unique to Prudential, but most of our clients are in it.
And lastly, we'll do this in another meeting, but has the evolution of other types of target, age-target investments, since you folks thought of Goalmaker, have they sort of passed Goalmaker by, meaning they're faster and more?
I definitely don't think that they've passed Goalmaker by. I think that target dates funds have their nice, important niche in the industry as well when you're thinking about helping participants get towards their date of retirement. It all depends on how those target dates are constructed. What, the majority of plan sponsors that we work with that have Goalmaker, most of them tend to like Goalmaker more than a target date option, because you're, the board is using their underlying investments that they've already approved as part of their overall investment menu, to then build their Goalmaker funds, which essentially act like a target date fund, especially if you're using the age adjustment feature that changes as you get closer to and then go into post-retirement. So a lot of our government board So a lot of our government boards that use Goalmaker, they either have removed their target date funds, no longer offer, or don't offer a target date fund. There's still some boards that choose to offer both, where they can have a target date option and Goalmaker and then let participants choose.
Okay. Lauren, can you remember, we were talking about this? Is it, am I, am I on the right, is this the right, is this the right song?
Yeah, I think so. I think there are, there's probably pros and cons to each Goalmaker versus target date fund. So I think for the Goalmaker program, it definitely takes more sort of operational work internally and using our external vendors, whereas if you had a target date fund, you know, you wouldn't be involved in rebalancing as a quarter, the client, the plan sponsor wouldn't be involved in sort of that rebalancing. So I would say it's a little bit more operational work for the Goalmaker program. If you didn't want to be involved to that level of detail, you could just have a platform of target date funds and then you wouldn't sort of be involved in the quarterly rebalancing that would be outsourced to like an investment manager.
So looking in the rearview mirror, we were talking, if you had to do it all over again, would you have done, would you have used Goalmaker or would you have, you had mentioned that you wouldn't have, I forgot, I don't want to put any words in your mouth, but what were you saying about, that you would have done something differently?
Yeah, I think there are, again, like I said, there's pros and cons to each. I guess the one sort of drawback, if you were to move to a target date platform, would be the fees on your active funds would increase. But that being aside, if you're starting from scratch, I think operationally, I think it would probably make more sense for plan sponsor to kind of outsource those operations to like a targeting manager.
Versus a?
Versus like a?
Goalmaker.
That's all I think, your program. Yeah, just with the caveat that knowing that the fees on the active could potentially increase, so.
All right. Thank you.
I have one other comment to that, too. You would also lose some of your, well, a lot of your ability probably to tailor what the portfolios look like, so if you wanted an inflation responsive component, you know, presumably you could get it because I think there's a big universe now of target date funds, but you don't have that ability to customize. Yeah, but there definitely is more of an operational burden by having it, having brought it in house.
A lot of the conflict I've had with staff in the last two years regarding this plan is centered on customization, though, isn't it? Some, to some degree.
Yeah, I'd say the underlying, well, the, you know, the white, the separately matched white label portfolios, whether, so those exist, whether they're in Goalmaker or not, I think would be kind of a second position.
All right. Okay. Thank you all. Thank the board for indulging me on that.
May I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Melinda. I've been doing a lot of thinking about the loss of funds on this regular basis, and I think that all of our printed material is superb, but I also recognize the human factor of the people who just don't want to read technical stuff and the other human factor of wanting to hear from somebody they trust. And I was wondering if we could add to our website a podcast or a Q and X, Q and A conversation between yourself, Treasurer, oh, well, and somebody for principal, to make the complicated simple, which is something you do extraordinarily well, and see that since they see your face and read your letter, if they read, and the signatures newsletter, I think being able to punch a button and actually seeing you and hearing you, they vote for you, I think they trust you to keep their money in the plan.
I'm sorry, we didn't think of that earlier. I agree with you.
Thank you.
And we just, we just cut a video this morning regarding something, regarding our defined benefit plan, just an 80-second thing to augment a, a press release announcement. So this is an idea that came from Comston. Is Chrissy on?
She's here.
So if you could hear Melinda clearly, what she's talking about is just let's augment and add to through video technology some of the things that we're sending out in print to kind of drive the point home.
Exactly.
And not lastly on the subject, but Michael, I'd like, I know you can't prove a negative, but when you say 332 million, that might be a ballpark. I mean, we may have had the potential, is there any way to calculate the potential that could have rolled out? I mean, like, it could have been 900 million that could have rolled out and 330 of it did roll out. I mean, I think in addition to having the, as somebody said, you can't manage what you can't measure.
Yeah. Let us, let us think about that, Mr. Treasurer. One of the, one of the key things that we struggle with in terms of just data is that the vast majority of the subplans don't provide us with data when they separate from service, when, when, when participants terminate. So we wouldn't know if they were, you know, in active or terminated status because I think, because I think one, if we were able to ascertain across your entire population of who truly everyone was in terminated status, you can calculate a metric like that. But there might be some other way that we can brainstorm to try to at least get a ballpark number there.
I'd like to be able to say without too many lawyers involved and not having that data point, I'm going to do this video to say, if you're thinking that you want to keep your money in this efficient plan for the rest of your life, a majority of retirees like you agree. You know, I wouldn't have to know it's 72% or 53%, just, I think I'm, I think I'm pretty confident in saying that today, that the majority of people, if you're thinking about keeping your money here, the majority of the people would agree with you and are voting for us. Do it the same. Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Chavella. Can I make a comment?
Yes.
One of the, one of the ways I think that you would know whether people were still active or retired with the various agencies is if the human resources departments of those agencies would provide that information. I know just myself, for example, retired in 2016, but in 2020, I was still shown as active, when in fact, I wasn't. I mean, I wasn't still active. So I mean, that's one suggestion for being able to have the data needed for knowing who's active and who's actually retired.
Yeah, Chavella, you're absolutely, you actually are perfectly describing the issue that we run into where we connect in with all of these subplans and unfortunately, they just don't timely provide that information over to us. So that's, that's one of the big things that we would love to be able to, to solve.
Well, Mike, one thing I would add there, though, is, you know, over the course of the last year, we've had a big focus on employer education, and as a matter of fact, we've enhanced that portion of the website, so there's a lot more tools and availability and access to our employers. Because I think what we've also found, completely agreed, this is vital information, but we won't know until someone tells us, Prudential won't know until someone tells them, but through this employer education initiative, that's one of the many things that we've really impressed upon with employers, that they need to be active in using the portal, updating the data for not only their current active employees, but those that have terminated, so that we have the correct status. So that should be another, you know, initiative and push to get this information from our employers, but it is ongoing. It's an ongoing effort.
Yeah, great call out, Mary. I should have definitely mentioned all the, all the tremendous work your team and our team did around building out the employer education work last summer.
Hey, Mary, this is Steve. I have a follow-up question on that. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. And Treasurer, you may can comment on this as well, but you might have access to that information or better access to information through the state health plan because of retirees being involved there, or is that something we could utilize that information to have a better accessibility on this active versus inactive or status?
Yeah, I think that's a great point, and we have looked at that some in the past. I know there has been a hesitation to share information, I think more around HIPAA regulations, but, you know, there's been other instances where we've received a no in the past and tried again and got a yes, so could be time to try again, see if we get a yes. I think that's a great idea.
It's a great point. Chavella, the reason, I just looked it up, Chavella, the reason you're still showing active is because of that big per diem you're getting from the being on state retirement, top of the retirement board.
Okay, right, all right. Whatever you say.
Just don't tell Michael about that.
Do we still have, do we still have?
Matt has.
Yeah, yeah, Matt Herman, go ahead, Matt.
Yes, thank you. Can, can everyone hear me?
We can.
You're all here. Perfect.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for your time. In the interest of time, because I want to make sure we can help keep you guys on track, I'm going to go quickly through a couple key updates. I'll keep my comments limited to page 51 and 52, and I think over the course of the next few minutes, I'll hit on a couple things, too, thematically that we just covered. First and foremost, when you look at 51, I'll draw your attention to the bottom of the page in the quarterly breakdown. One of the things we saw as we reflect on all of last year is when the pandemic hit around March, we made the decision to start working from home and serving folks and their education needs virtually. So when you look at Q2, Q3, and Q4, those were virtual engagement quarters, and what you'll notice is a nice steady increase in the engagement we saw, whether you're looking at group meetings, you're looking at number of attendees in group meetings, or you're looking at individual meetings. It's really reflective of, I think, the comfort we started to see folks that we serve getting, getting information out. Kudos to staff, to Christie for helping with communicating these things. We had a lot of good feedback and we've learned a lot as we reflect on 2020. The other thing I'll point out is if you look at the top of the page, October in particular, October was a tremendous month for us. We saw a lot of success during this month, over 2,100 individual consultations, 171 group meetings, 317 employer meetings, and this was National Save for Retirement Month. So there was a tremendous amount of activity that happened leading up to October, and then, as you can see on this page, a lot of activity during the month to engage and to educate. And I just want to personally thank Tom and Christie and Mary and Vicky and the entire staff for the planning and the focus and the partnership, because we saw a lot of powerful things. We had a lot of positive feedback from employers and employees, and we learned a lot. To give you a kind of an example of some of the things that happened that month, we did a lot of employer engagements to provide them with information to share with employees. We expanded some of our education sessions, and we talked a lot over the last 10 or 15 minutes about retirees. We did a lot of special sessions for near and at retirement populations of folks. We called that our Roadmap to Retirement Seminar. Tremendous feedback and results from that. We're continuing to do more of those now. Education conferences, annual enrollment events, benefit season events. We also continued some of the things we've been doing for the last year, where we're personally reaching out to retirees to do one-on-one consultations with them to make sure they have the information they need. We've done a year-to-date, or I'm sorry, since we started in April of last year, around 2,000 of those outreach calls. So really, really good feedback. One of the other things we learned is how to engage folks virtually for large events, doing more large events. We did several very large events during the month of October. Some of them had 3, 400 attendees. On the 22nd of October, we did a virtual retirement seminar statewide, open to all employers, all employees. We had 1,650 folks register and another 1,343, or I'm sorry, 1,300 of those actually attended live, and that was across 139 employers across the state. So a lot of learnings there, a lot of good engagement, and we're applying that even now as we move forward, doing more large events, doing more statewide and regional events, continuing to engage folks, but also doing some things for special groups. We're engaging the K through 12 space to make sure folks who are working in the school systems have access, and we're kind of adjusting when we engage them at different times of the day, because we know it's a little harder for them to get away from their roles and engage in the education events that we have, doing some things with law enforcement officers. To Mary's point, also doing some education events, webinars geared towards employers to help them with some of the administrative aspects of the plan, and continuing our focus on retirees, doing more large, larger statewide and regional retirement events, continuing to do outreach to those folks individually, and also thinking about groups who may need unique ways to engage with us. They may be blind, they may be deaf. We're also looking at folks who may be speaking Spanish. How do we engage those populations in this virtual environment? So tremendous amount of feedback, really good results as you look over the last year, over 2020. Mike hit on a lot of those numbers. We're also engaging employers. We saw a 30% increase in employer adoptions of plans. We saw a 130% increase in the employers who are adopting our auto escalation capability. We call it contribution accelerator. So a lot of interest with employers, too, to make sure that their employees have the education, have the support they need, and are driving towards financial wellness. So that work continues to this year. We'll continue to share updates, but I just want to thank the board, staff, for your leadership, for your support, for your partnership. We receive a lot of positive feedback from employers and employees about this program on a daily basis, and thank you for your support.
Greg?
Greg had provided his update.
Now on to item nine, 401K, 457 custodian update.
Sure. It's Patrick Batel from BNY Mellon. I hope you all can hear me well.
We can, thank you, Patrick.
Okay, perfect. I will be brief. I know we're behind schedule, but we will make it up here. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, the board, staff, Mary in particular, for the relationship we have and opportunity to provide some perspective on our core services and discussion with staff. It was recommended that we focus our attention on really describing the role of the custodian. And we want to basically outline a couple of key considerations in terms of what are the foundational services we provide, and you can go to the next slide, which really captures in essence what a custodian does. Custody, accounting services are foundational. Ultimately, it's about safekeeping your assets, your participant assets, to ensure safety, to ensure that they are accounted for, providing daily accounting and net asset values on those assets every single day, ensuring close coordination with Prudential and their team, so that your, your clients and your participants can have access to their information on a daily basis and have visibility into the investments that they are making and the performance of those investments. We provide data and analytic services. These are, again, very important from a performance perspective. I would suggest to you that, again, allowing both Mary and her team, but also the finance organization under Fran Lawrence, the investment team, we work very closely with Chris Morrison and his team as well, to ensure that they are getting performance and risk analytics that provide a view into the performance of these investments, whether or not they're in compliance, but also how they map according to benchmarks and peers. So when you think about the role of the custodian, I think it's important for a bank So when you think about the role of the custodian, I think it's important for a bank to be well capitalized, have ample liquidity. We're the largest custodian in the world. To do all what's described here involves a tremendous amount of investment in the core business. We invested three billion dollars in technology alone, both to support infrastructure as well as client-related innovation. To be clear, if you think about the onset of COVID-19 and impact that had on the market and on your team and our teams, to transition to over ninety-five percent of our staff from an in-office environment to a virtual environment within a couple of weeks to support significant increases in volume activity across all different types of assets and all different geographies and markets without any disruption. And we were able to do that because we've been investing in technology for many years. And that allowed our team to, to support our clients, including SRP, while there was tremendous market volatility and significant increase in volume activity. When I think about the business, there's a couple of key major points that are important for a custodian. You have a lot of services here, they're all key, but are they integrated? So there's a real focus on integration, having a single operating model, positioning as much as possible. Mr. Treasurer, just keying in on some of your points with respect to cybersecurity. So from our perspective, going digital doesn't just translate to efficiencies, but most importantly, it translates to optimization, reduction of operational friction, and increase and enhance risk management. Ensuring that we're transmitting in a manner with you and you're transmitting with us, that's going to protect the integrity of that transmission of those instructions so that bad actors are held to the side and we are taking instructions from the right party within SRP and ensuring that you're getting the same quality information in return on a daily basis, very, very important. The rise of alternatives certainly requires, in this low-return environment, better insights, more transparency, more liquidity. And so that's a huge, that's an important role of the custodian as well. And then to allow for open architecture, because as much as we're spending a significant amount in technology, there are other providers, whether it's a Prudential or others, that provide important services to SRP. And our job is in part to integrate those service providers into BNY Mellon so that we are providing information quickly in a way that's accurate and timely. On the next slide, you get into some more detail as to what we provide, some of the more key services that we provide to SRP. Again, I would highlight the custody, the accounting, and the performance. We have KPIs, so key performance indicators that have been mapped to service-level agreements to ensure quality and would feed that risk if any standards are not met. So I think there's been tremendous amount of improvement. The last time I had the pleasure of presenting to the board, we were, we had a lot of work to turn around the relationship to ensure that we were adding more resources, that we were improving our deliverables, timeliness, accuracy. And I would like to think that the investment team would agree and that Mary and her staff would agree that we have had quite the turnaround. And I do think we have, and looking at slides, looking at the next slide, if you look at the year-end review, we've done a tremendous amount to drive a higher performance. We executed the contract extension, which we sincerely appreciate. But again, focusing on quality, focusing on service, focusing on resources, these were the commitments that I personally made to the board when I presented in December of 2019. And I feel that we have come through since that time to not only meet, to actually deliver on those commitments, but to ensure, again, ongoing quality and transparency in the process. Let me just ask Fager, Gary Boldy, my colleague, who is the Relationship Manager, to just add on and make some comments. Fager?
Great, thank you, Patrick. Good morning, Treasurer Falwell, members of the board, Mary, and the entire team at SRP. As Patrick said, thank you for the opportunity for us to be here today, and hopefully one day we get to be back there in person. Patrick just spoke a little bit about the role of the custodian, but I want to bring it forward and give you some real live examples of how we, as your custodian, are partnering with you as well as interacting with your other trusted business partners, for example, Mike and Matt at Prudential, as well as Paul from Galliard, who will be speaking next. On slide five, you'll see some completed initiatives for 2020, as well as some that we're working on now with you all. Patrick mentioned the custody contract extension that we are very appreciative of. Shortly thereafter, BNY Mellon submitted a proposal offering a more holistic relationship pricing as part of our bid for the custodial services for the North Carolina Stable Value Fund that was mentioned earlier in the meeting. Again, we would like to thank you for this additional mandate, and we very much appreciate the opportunity to expand our relationship. Looking quickly across the page at the priorities for '21, we are implementing the new fee schedule, effective 1/1/21, so you should be realizing some savings with the first quarter invoice. It looks like Lauren is going to be discussing Schmidt a little bit further down, so I'll just pass over that. We are working actively with Mary, as well as Paul and his team from Galliard on the conversion that's slated to go live April 1st, taking in those assets. And really, another item that we would like to get working on as soon as we can is putting an onsite representative down in the North Carolina offices. We think this would greatly enhance our relationship, give folks easier access to personnel, a quicker turnaround, and just an all-around benefit to the SRP team. So hoping we can do that sooner rather than later. And hopefully you noticed a greater improvement with that as well. Before I open it up for questions, if I could just take a moment, I would like to congratulate Mary on her retirement on behalf of the whole team here and thank her for being a great partner to BNY Mellon and all the wonderful things she's accomplished.
Thank you, Fager, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mary. Very quickly, we ran through, so I wanted to see if anyone had questions for Patrick, myself, Greg Wilcox, the Service Director is on the phone as well.
Hearing none, thank you very much. Now I'm going to have to go to a federal court Zoom proceeding. And when I do that, if we're still in the meeting, I'd like to pass the gavel over to Melinda to preside, if that's without objection.
I'm sorry, I missed something. You're asking me to?
Preside.
Oh, preside.
I have to leave. No, not now.
Not now, okay.
I mean, when it gets, when I'm told I need to be there.
Sure, alright, me too.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I guess I should ask to borrow your car or something. I see a nice set of keys there. Alright, next we'll go to Paul, item ten.
Paul, are you on? We can't hear you, I don't know if you're on mute or if there's someone else from Galliard. Is this on the line?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry, is that, is that good?
Yes, it's perfect, thanks.
Okay, apologize for that. Well, good morning, Treasurer Falwell and the Board of Trustees and staff. Thank you again for allowing me to present our fourth quarter results. If we could, could we turn to page two under section one? And next page there? There we go. And, you know, I don't know if any of you are familiar, but we had some big news from Galliard in February. More or less, Wells Fargo Asset Management, which Galliard is a part of, has entered into agreement to be sold from Wells Fargo the Bank to a consortium of two private equity firms, GTCR and Reverence Capital, for a deal worth about 2.1 billion. As I mentioned, the deal was announced on Tuesday, February 23rd, and should close in the second half of this year. Our first client call was to the state of North Carolina with Lauren and Mary. Mike Norman, who's co-president of Galliard, Ryan Olson, myself, had a Zoom call, and we thought the results were pretty good. Just to give you a couple details about the transaction. GTCR is a private equity firm out of Chicago. They've invested more than 20 billion in over 250 companies since 1980. And they currently have an investment in Cap Trust. Reverence Capital Partners is a PE firm out of New York City. The founders, formerly members of Goldman Sachs, have a long history in working with financial service companies. They currently have investments in both Russell Investments, in both the consulting arm and the asset management arm, and Victory Capital. So they're well versed in this type of transaction. You know, as part of the transaction as well, Wells Fargo the Bank will still have equity interest of about 9.9% in the new company. However, they will not have voting rights and will be more or less a silent partner. And this non-voting interest in the new company is meant to signify the importance of maintaining the relationships with the bank and to provide a good distribution partner. So the question of why Wells Fargo the Bank was looking at this, you know, the CEO Charlie Scharf has commented at a recent earnings call that business lines such as Wells Fargo Asset Management and others were looked at as options for being divested. You know, the private equity firms here, you know, believe that there's great growth potential for Wells Fargo Asset Management. That includes opportunities in front of Galliard too. So both GTCR and Reverence have history investing in these financial services companies. How might be asked, the terms of the sale will result in a change in control for WFAM or Wells Fargo Asset Management and Galliard, as we are a wholly owned subsidiary of WFAM Holdings. As part of the process, we will need to work with clients to acknowledge the consent of sale. So we'll, once we get a couple months into this, since we're going to close at the second half of the year, we'll get a letter of consent to the committee to review. At this point, though, we don't know if there's any changes to Galliard's legal structure. And what I mean by that, instead of us being, you know, Galliard Inc., right now, we could be Galliard LLC. But really, we don't anticipate any of these changes to the Galliard Investment and Client Services processes to our team. So, you know, with that being said, the Wells Fargo Asset Management name will change, however, the Galliard branding will remain the same. So that's nice to hear. As I mentioned, this should close in the second, second half of 2021. Both GTCR and Reverence Capital share the view that every investment is made is signing up for an indefinite hold. But on average, you know, these PE firms hold firms between seven and 10 years. But, you know, really, to sum everything up, what changes, what changes today? Nothing, still business as usual, the client experience, the same teams at Galliard, and same investment process and approach will remain the same. So there's no issues there. What's different? Nothing at this point. As I mentioned, the deal will close at the second half of this year. And our parent firm, as I mentioned, Wells Fargo Asset Management, will rebranding to a new name. So as I mentioned, the only thing that's really up for review for the committee is the approval, consent agreement approval. But I wanted to ask, does the board or staff have any questions regarding this transaction?
Questions, report. Proceed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so as you see in the left-hand column, 123120, our assets under management were about 95.4 billion. You know, put this into perspective, our all-time high assets under management was in October of 2020, and that was about 97.4 billion. Our total, you know, just to give you an idea of where we stand as of the end of February, we're at about 95.15 billion. So we're seeing assets pretty sticky as, you know, participants put their money in, they're not withdrawing it, you know, as they may have in the past, you know, when the, when downturns turn into upturns and participants got more risk off appetite and wanted to be more in equity. So that's something to look at there. In terms of timing, you know, I want to just kind of breeze through this. In the middle column, 215 institutional clients, eighty-five percent have been with us for at least five years, and this includes the state of North Carolina. And I do want to say that, you know, I'd like to thank you for your continued faith in Galliard as we just hit our, I believe, our 10-year anniversary on December 1st. So thank you for that. Turning page three, the next page. This is basically the snapshot, one more page, I'm sorry. There we go. This provides a snapshot of where we were at the end of the year. Main message here is one of consistent stability. On the left-hand column, we see assets of the 1231 were roughly about 2.36 billion on the, you know, and then we see, to provide some perspective on growth in 2020, assets at the end of 2019 were roughly 2.14 billion. So we saw asset growth of roughly about 217 million, or roughly 10.1% over the year. And if you break down why the assets grew, 163.5 million, or roughly 7.6% of that 10.1% growth, came from participant activity. So participants moving their money into the fund, and the remaining 53.5 million was interest earned, or 2.5% of that 10.1% growth. You know, looking at the portfolio characteristics as of September 30th and December 31st, we could see average book value wrap, strength ratings have not changed over the quarter, remain strong at A+. The same can be said for the underlying quality of the bonds that make up the state of North Carolina Stable Value Fund, where they stayed at double A over the past years. Contract issuers did not change. The net blended yield or crediting rate did dip some over the quarter by roughly 12 basis points, which would be expected as these numbers follow the directions of prevailing interest rates. The underlying yields also fell during the quarter from 81 basis points to 67 basis points. So, you know, while that 67 basis points appears to be a small number, when looking at comparable alternatives, say, a 91-day T-bill, or a three-month T-bill, or a three-year constant maturity treasury, we see that that 67 basis points compares to a yield of the three-month T-bill of nine basis points and a three-year CMT, or three-year treasury at 17 basis points as of December 31st, 2020. So strong results there. When looking at the market to book ratio, market yields have fallen dramatically, as I mentioned, in 2020. And the blended yield will, over time, follow the direction of market interest rates. So again, we should see the blended yield, as I mentioned, just mentioned, move lower, all else being equal, in the coming quarters. But the stable value funds, strong market to book value, will help mitigate the impact and fall in yields as that 4.87% gain will be amortized over the blended, in the blended yield, over the duration of the fund to a tune of roughly 1.65% per year. I did double-check as of the end of February, assets were up, you know, roughly 16 million, or about seven tenths of a percent since the end of the year. The blended yield, you know, did drop a little, as I mentioned it would. It's down about 19 basis points to 205. And the really impressive number two is the market to book is at 104.39, which, you know, isn't that much of a fall. So really nice, really nice statistics there. The column on the right shows that assets have been pretty consistently growing over the past few years. And again, as the portfolio distribution below shows, it remains a really consistent quarter to quarter. So flipping head to page four. You know, this, this shows the strong, consistent, long-term relative outperformance we've been able to provide to the state of North Carolina's 401K plan participants. And this is the actual participant experience as of December 31st, 2020. Net of all fee, net of all fee performance on a year-to-date basis, outperformed the three-year constant maturity treasury benchmark by almost 2%. And even over longer time frames, five and 10 years, this fund has provided additional return of 72 and 118 basis points respectively. Very strong long-term performance provided by the underlying investments and that market value premium that I was talking about before as a driver of performance. Flipping page five, we see the historical cash flows. And again, nothing on this page alarms us, you know. We saw inflows on the first quarter of 2020 range from 6 to 8%. And I, as I mentioned about assets in our firm, they remain pretty sticky. So, you know, the message on this page is that the figures here do not appear much different from other stable value separate account clients. So, you know, good numbers here. Page six. We see the historical portfolio characteristics over roughly the last nine quarters. Again, we see the ongoing amortization of the underlying gains show a pretty stable historical net blended yield in the upper left-hand corner. And as mentioned, we would expect this number to drift lower. But again, you know, the 104.87 market book will help mitigate this decline. Historical duration has been extremely consistent around 2.8 to three years. On the upper right hand of page, market book has been increasing as the underlying yields have dropped and have resulted in stronger price gains. But again, we will see this kind of tick down, all else being equal. And, you know, the the yields, as I mentioned, have dropped to the end of the year. But we have seen an uptick in yields, you know, in the the first part of March this year, late, late February. So those yields will be, I think, be going up by the time we do our next report. But there's no, there's no concerns for us on on any of these statistics. So if we flip ahead to page nine. One more there. Actually, I am sorry, could we go back, could we go back to page? Yeah, it's the their allocations. And again, they've remained consistent over the past quarter. As mentioned earlier, they all remain investment grade and have maintained the same financial strength ratings from a year ago and for the for the last quarter. And all are two notches above our lowest minimum allowable weighted average rating of A minus. So over the fourth quarter, we did see one fee reduction from Transamerica in November. And as you don't see on this page, because it happened in 2021, we're happy to report that three additional wrappers have agreed to lower their fees. So that being AGL and Nationwide going from 16 to 15 basis points, that occurred in February 1st. And then we also can report that the MetLife wrap also is dropping from 18 to 17 basis points on March 1st. So all these changes will be reflected in our first quarter 21 report. So and just, you know, kind of give you an idea of where we think fees are going here. I would guess that 15 basis points will be the floor for now, as none of our 10 wrap providers has gone lower than that 15 basis points. So, you know, we're seeing the these fees come way down from the financial crisis where they were about 25 to 30 basis points. So again, you know, we're constantly in contact as we've been notifying notifying the committee and the board and staff regarding these fee decreases over time. So we've seen quite a bit in 2020. I would think that they might be slowing down a bit in 21, but it doesn't mean we're not still constantly talking with with our our wrap contract friends. If we flip ahead to page 10, you know, oh, I'm sorry, let's flip ahead to page. Yeah, keep going. Right there, yeah, that's the favorite page. We highlight the fees charged on the Stable Value Fund. And again, good message to to share that the fees have dropped since 93020. They've dropped to a tune of roughly a percent to in terms of the Galliard Investment Management fee. And that was the, you know, the old total overall fee dropped about 3 tenths of a basis point, which represents a 1% fee savings. The main source of this reduction was from the Galliard fee dropping by roughly a tenth of a basis point. And this was due to assets growing and being reflected in our tiered fee schedule. So, you know, we should see further contract issuer reductions in our next report as there were three wrap providers providing additional fee savings in the first quarter. Again, good story to share with fees moving lower, lower. If we flip ahead to page 11. One more page. Yeah, these are the, you know, the the managers that make up the portfolio and, you know, the the underlying strategies that they they do. And, you know, just one thing I want to point out on this page is that we work with the external managers who do a little, you know, do things a little bit differently in their investment process and philosophy. But again, they all maintain a high-quality bias. And again, they, these returns have shown, their strategies have shown some strong returns in in 2020. So really good message there. If we flip ahead to the next page. We see the rolled-up total portfolio on page, on this page, and we see that the manager allocation column on the left does not materially change over the quarter. The the stiff or the cash buffer is dropped from about 2.8% to 2 as of the end of the year from the last quarter. And this money was redeployed to both Galliard and the external managers. And the other highlight on that column is that the external manager allocation increased slightly over the quarter from 49 and a half percent as 930 to 50%. So among the underlying fixed income sector allocation, you know, the portfolios remain pretty consistent to where they were last quarter, so we don't have any real concerns there. If we flip ahead to the next page. Yeah, we see that, we see this is the underlying market value returns for the portfolio. And, you know, we see that all this underlying strategies outperform the benchmarks benchmarks over all time periods shown on this page. So specifically over the last three months, these returns were quite impressive, given the investments were all in very high-quality issues. General overweight, you know, in terms of, you know, commentary for for these, for the underlying managers and in the brevity of time, I'll just say that the the general overweight to spread assets continue to drive outperformance over the quarter and the year as allocations to tax bill munis, agency mortgage-backed securities, asset-backed securities, commercial mortgage-backed securities, mainly corporates, all prove beneficial. So detracting from returns for the for the three-month period was, you know, our higher quality bias in the corporate sectors as lower quality issues generally outperform. Being a bit longer in duration was not as additive for some managers. But as you see with these returns, that it wasn't substantial on their underlying performance. So, you know, the the following pages show sector allocations and statistics on the underlying managers in the brevity of time. You know, the main message there is that we have no concerns, the the allocation seemed consistent where they've been, and there's no outliers or concerns we have for the committee. So with that, I'd like to leave it open for any questions on the Stable Value Fund.
Any questions? Okay.
Okay, with that, I I would also like to echo the the sentiment from Phaedra that to congratulate Mary on her retirement, and it's been a pleasure working with you and and, you know, hope the best things for you going forward.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate that.
Okay, next is Lauren, I guess, or Will.
Yeah. It'll be, I'll be working with Callan on this agenda item. I think Callan will start things off with the fourth quarter investment performance report.
Great, thank you. This is Elizabeth Hood from Callan. I just want to make sure everyone can hear me okay.
Yes, you sound good.
Great, thank you. And right, I'm looking at the clock and thinking we might need to be a little bit more creative. So I'm going to skip the first few slides, slides that I mentioned, and if you could maybe take us to slide 16. And while you do that, I'll echo our congratulations to Mary and Nigel as well. So we have very much enjoyed working with you. In terms of time, some high-level O W manager. So we'll go ahead and go to page 16 and of the markets, just to set the stage for the performance review. You know, if you look at the returns for 2020, you would have no idea that the markets went haywire at the end of March, that we had a global pandemic, the world came to a halt just about a year ago. The markets really looked like we had a great time. So you outside the U.S., we also saw strong for 2020, outperformed U.S. stocks, so up 17% in the fourth quarter. And leadership there more from emerging markets and from small caps, up 20% and 19% respectively. And then we also saw strong returns from fixed income. So in the fourth quarter, the broad aggregate index was a, this gives us a back maybe balances or looking through Goalmaker. So we'll see, I'll just go ahead and speak to it. Again, participants really benefited from this positive market environment. So the plan increased by $1.38 billion over the quarter. That's really due to investment gains. So investment gains were 1.43 billion, which far more than offset the outflows of 49 million. And of this 14 and a half billion, roughly 7 billion is invested through the Goalmaker program. And you can see here, too, I referenced the participants. And we'll just go ahead and go to page 20. And while we're moving pages, I'll just give a verbal confirmation of the passive options. So BlackRock is responsible for managing about $4 billion in passive strategies. And their job really is to replicate those index returns. So just want to confirm that they've done a great job there. So all of the passive options are very closely tracking their respective indices. So participants are getting good exposure there. And then on page 20, we see the active manager options. So in bold, you'll see, let's see. Maybe, I think, back a little bit, looks like that's page 30, so if we're getting on the pages. Outperforming its benchmark and peers, this manager is on watch. So as you may recall, we've been taking a look at some team changes and retirements coming into this meeting when we published our performance reports. At the time, the big question was what was going to happen to ownership? There were rumors that Wells Fargo might sell their asset management division. And as we just heard from Galliard, that's no longer a question. We now know exactly what that looks like. So we recommend that you all keep them on watch as we continue monitoring and evaluating that transition. So focusing on team continuity, making sure there aren't any changes in process, watching assets, et cetera. Of these high-level, we have five of the six participant-level options outperformed their benchmarks in the fourth quarter and in the calendar year 2020 and over three years. So that's very, very good, solid, consistent outperformance. And generally speaking, most of these options are above median for most of the time periods. So what that tells us is is we did a better job than average, right? So it's not as if there was somewhere else participants could have invested and done better. We're we're above median, and several of these are even top quartiles over a number of periods. So very consistent, very solid, very steady returns. Within the fixed income space, both managers really solidly contributing to the outperformance. Within large cap, we saw good outperformance, which, as we've discussed over over the last several quarters, that's a hard place to add values. So really remarkable that the structure of the managers has been able to do well. Hotchkiss and Wiley had a nice recovery with that value leadership at the end of the year. Sands Capital, on the growth side, has continued to generate strong returns. Hard not to notice that 73% for the last year. So very additive to overall performance. Within the international portfolio, which is on the next page, page 21, good, strong performance in general and also good outperformance versus the benchmark. So Mondrian's a manager that's been on watch, that value style has been a bit out of favor. So we were very happy to see that performing well with that change in value leadership. And Bailey Gifford continues to perform well also. Within small caps, participating in the strong market performance but lagging just a bit. I know that we have talked about the small and mid-cap option at great length, so I won't belabor that. But generally speaking, you know, close, just modest underperformance to the benchmark. And I'll hold off on the wedge discussion. We have a little bit of a deeper dive. So I want to pause before we go through that to see if anybody has any questions. I know, again, really high level, but generally speaking, it's a very positive quarter. We don't really have very many concerns. Any questions before we talk about wedge? Okay, with that, Rick, if we could go back to page 13, please. I'm going to hand it over to Weston to walk through the work that we've done alongside Lauren in talking to the wedge team.
Chris, on, I think it's page 66 in the Durand. It is, man, the board asked Callan and staff to perform some additional due diligence and come back with recommendation on either retention or termination potentially. And so just as not to bury the lead here, I guess maybe the the big, big question here is would Callan re-underwrite this strategy again today if we were starting anew? And the answer is yes. We we believe that they remain an important component of this SMID cap option for participants. However, we do believe that they should remain on watch until performance shows some sort of sustained improvement. So just, just along with Elizabeth, myself and North Carolina staff, had a virtual onsite with Wedge. And we came away from that meeting with little change and conviction. And just to summarize some of the issues here. Number one, there's a personnel issue, and I think everybody is well aware of the performance issue. And the personnel issue is a reminder is what we announced at the last meeting. Brian Pratt, who was a general partner at Wedge, had to step down as a result of a medical issue. In addition, there have been some analyst departures that have happened over the last five years. But the key point here is that we don't see any sign of systemic issues at Wedge. And more importantly, Wedge remains well-resourced in spite of some of these departures. Now, on to the performance issue, and I'm going to spend maybe a little more time here. While the performance is below the benchmark over three years, and you may have seen in the report, just to to put the number on it, that Wedge has returned 2.9% versus the index of 4.3%. And on page in there, we we have a calendar year summary of performance. And really, the various calendar years, there hasn't been any sort of major blow up with what what Wedge is doing. It's been somewhat of a, call it a slow bleed. And I think that that's important as we evaluate, you know, is Wedge doing something different? Have they, so on the companies that may not fit their, or what they think good companies that are reason that they can find what you hired them to do, which is basically find higher-quality companies at a discount. And that, those characteristics really stick out on the middle of page 14. So just the next page, there, Rick, we've got a bar chart in the middle of the portfolio, the current portfolio as of the end. And maybe somewhat interesting, companies have performed poorly relative to higher-priced companies. That that's nothing new. We've talked about this, you know, the value versus growth theme. Probably what is more, what is a more interesting dynamic is that the lowest-quality companies, in particular, those with no earnings were the ones that did the very best in 2020. And you see that there, pretty eye-popping numbers on the bottom of the page of page 14, where we look at the various quintiles of returns. And you'll note in the red, that is the cheapest quintile for the Russell 2000 in 2020, and this is the the small cap index. But as you look at the non-earners, those that basically earned no money was up 52%. And then same dynamic, as you look at the Russell 2000 value, the cheapest was negative 5.3 versus the, those that, you know, were the most expensive or had no earnings to speak of, did actually quite well. And then you also look at the same dynamic there at the top of page 15. We're looking at return on equity, so a quality metric. Those with the lowest return on equity actually outperformed those with the highest return on equity. And this kind of, this is a dynamic that we think will be probably more temporary. And, you know, to the extent that, you know, there is any sort of tightening of monetary policy or maybe just a little bit less euphoria in the marketplace, this is something that that should reverse, and if so, Wedge is in a position to do well. So, you know, I I would say that, you know, Wedge is still doing what they were hired to do. Should they be a manager that, you know, decided to chase the lowest-quality companies, you know, that were trading at a more expensive price, we would be a little bit more concerned. But, you know, it's this error of But, you know, it's this error of commission that we're, or this error of omission that we're willing to overlook. Now, on the other hand, we need to be honest about Wedge's errors of commission, which would, I would categorize as mistakes that they've made in the portfolio. We've talked about PG&E. And that was certainly a mistake that they made, but really kind of, that's why I think that we highlighted the calendar year returns is really, it wasn't any sort of one security or any sort of one year. It's been more of this dynamic of the lowest quality companies rallying and the most expensive companies doing well. And, you know, should this, this dynamic reverse, we think that Wedge is in a good place to capture some excess returns going forward. So the bottom line is that Callan's recommendation to the board is to keep Wedge on the watch list and continue to monitor them closely. We are not recommending any change at this time. Are there any questions I can answer about Wedge?
Any questions for the board?
And this is Lauren. I would just add that staff, as Weston mentioned, staff did participate in the virtual onsite meeting with Wedge and Callan. And staff agree.
Keeping somebody on the watch list is normally a vote required.
Yes, I believe so.
It would be, given how long they've been on. What's the protocol then? You had to have a vote to put them on the watch list, right?
Yes.
You had to have a vote to take them off the watch list. What's the protocol for keeping them on the watch?
Well, I believe because there was requests made to the board to actually do a deeper dive. So this is just a way to sort of memorialize that the work was done and the board is comfortable with kind of keeping them on the watch list for another period of time.
I respect that, but what is the process? How often do we have to vote to keep somebody on the watch list? I believe it's exactly four quarters.
Yeah, so per the charter, it says that should a manager remain on the watch list for 12 months, for one year, the board will review and.
Given that, do I hear a motion to keep Wedge on the watch list?
Steve, so moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
Melinda, second. Any further discussion? So what happens if that vote fails?
Well, it's also whether to retain or not.
No, but let's say that vote, the vote is on the table, what would happen if it just failed?
Each time we would take direction from the board, add the next act if you want us to replace.
But not today.
No.
So if it failed, then. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I think this. I don't think it's going to hap, it's not going to happen. But I just need to think about what would happen if that happened. If this vote failed, this force right now, they'd be off, they would be off the watch list. They would be off the watch list.
That's correct.
Going to go back to the process.
Correct. And so like all the other managers, they would, they would, you know, not be on the watch list.
Right. They could actually advertise that they're off the watch list.
They would be stating, that's true. Yeah, that would be true.
Okay, motion on table second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, this is Nigel, just, just very quickly. So just to take a step back. So one of the things that prompted this question was we've made a change to an option that increases the allocation to a manager who's on the watch list currently. And I guess what we're saying is that we're okay with increasing the allocation to a manager who's on the watch list. And we're okay with that. I think I'm still trying to figure out the reasons for it. But we're okay with that because we think this manager at some point will not, will no longer be on the watch list. Is that really what we're saying?
I think that's correct. I think at this point, just because we haven't seen a strong rebound in performance yet, we just want to be conservative and keep them on the watch list while we continue to monitor our performance. And to the extent that starts to improve, I think then they would be a candidate to remove from the watch list.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Melinda. One thing I have noticed in the markets over the past year, the COVID result, is that it's been very erratic. And things I thought would do well didn't, and things that I thought would not do well did. So it's kind of like a fruit basket turnover. And I think one more quarter might give us more clarification now that the Biden tax. Yeah, the program is going in and the markets appear to be settling. So I have no problem with a positive vote to accept the recommendation.
Yes. And so, and it is, I mean, just for clarity, it is the two components of number one, retaining the manager. Right?
Yes.
And then as if it is decided to retain, they're currently on the watch and to continue keeping them on watch. So sort of a two-step recommendation here.
All right, Parker, call roll.
Okay, Treasure Falwell.
Aye.
Shavela Thomas.
Aye.
Michael Lewis.
Aye.
Nels Rosen.
Aye.
And Nigel Long.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes.
And I'll be handing the gavel over to Melinda. I will try to get back when part of these proceedings are over. And, but want to thank staff for putting all this together. And I hope you're done by the time I'm done, but you might not be. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Treasure Falwell. And next item on the agenda is the investment policy statement changes for the small mid-cap fund structure. Page 199 on our screen.
I'd love to ask you if I could hear you.
Yeah. Can everyone hear us okay?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Are we all set then?
Yes.
My agenda, okay. All right, so we just had a few changes. It's really just an update to the IPS. The IPS has been updated to reflect the recent changes to the SMid cap fund. So changing the earnest mandate from value to core. And then also the target allocation to each underlying manager within the white label fund were also updated. So changing those targets to the active managers to 30% each. And then the BlackRock 2500 index fund to 10%. And all those changes are tracked in the document and are shown on pages 16, 28, 30, and 33.
Okay, is everybody clear on that now? Yes, no?
Yes, Steve, I'll move approval of this recommendation.
Okay. We have a second?
Yes, this is Nigel's second.
Okay. Any discussion? All the roles? Okay. Shavela Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you. Melinda Barron.
Aye.
Michael Lewis.
Aye.
Nels Rosen.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. All right. Let's see. Next item is the item number 12, North Carolina 401K and North Carolina 457 plans investment. Yeah. Lauren?
Thank you. First, I'll cover an update on the SMid transition. First, on the communication side, a letter was sent to all the participants who were invested in the SMid cap fund. That letter went out the week of January 18th. So basically notifying them of the upcoming changes and the upcoming changes to the fee. We did hire BlackRock as the transition manager, given their lower cost estimate and also some operational efficiencies. That transition started February 19th, and all trading was completed by the 25th of February. And assets were transferred to the managers on February 26th. 86% of the trading was completed in the first two days. And by the third day, we had about 99% of trading completed. Looking at the costs, so the way the process works when we hire a transition manager, first they do a pre-trade analysis for us to give us an idea of the potential costs. And then they, after the transition, they provide a post-trade report. And then you can kind of compare the two to see if they came in, you know, within line of the, of the pre-trade. So the post-trade report, first on commissions and taxes, that was pretty much in line. That came to about $97,000. That is just taxes and commissions. And they can usually estimate this part of the transition fairly well. The next part that BlackRock concludes in the report is called spread and market impact. And that's basically the difference between the bid and the ask spread, as well as the impact of actually like our trades in the market. That came in at 1.45 million and was again in line with the pre-trade estimate. The next section that BlackRock provides, it's called the opportunity cost. But it's really whether the market is trading in your favor or not. So this is kind of the most difficult part to estimate because you really don't know, you know, what the market's going to do on any given day. But we had some good news here and that the market was actually trading in our favor during the transition. So we actually made some money on some of the sells. So some of the stocks that we were selling in the market were actually trading up during the transition. So we actually made money here. So this was a positive 1.2 million. So that actually ended up bringing down the total cost of the transition pretty low. So the total, when you add in that sort of the positive number, the 1.2 million, takes us to 336,000. So that was the, the total cost, including all those components. So we see it as a very successful transition. We worked with BlackRock as the transition manager, BNY Mellon, Prudential, SRP staff. And, you know, it went off well. And then we were happy to report that we actually, you know, could make some money in that opportunity cost portion.
Okay, any, any questions or comments for Lauren? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to Lauren's report on the investment compliance summary report.
Thank you. So the SRP plans do not hold any prohibited holdings in the quarter. And we continue to monitor all investment manager guidelines on a daily basis, and we had no material issues. Just one update though for the board. In the fourth quarter, an executive order was signed, which prohibits US investors from, from investing in certain Chinese stocks. So specifically, these are stocks that are considered to be Communist China military companies, or they're being referred to CCMCs. So we did work with BNY Mellon to have this list of CCMCs added to the prohibited holdings list. So we're now checking these holdings as part of our standard compliance review as well. And I believe there are about 44 companies currently on the list. It seems like one or two get added maybe every month. So, you know, we'll keep on top of that, see if any additional companies get added. But our current international managers, one of them did not hold any CCMCs. Mondrian did hold two stocks that would be considered CCMCs, but they had divested in November and early January. So currently, we don't have any holdings that would be considered CCMCs.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I'm presuming since that executive order was in the last of the Trump administration and the current Biden administration is reversing a great number of executive orders, if not all of them, we may see this on the agenda again.
Yes. I think it seems like the Biden administration is being really careful, especially when it relates to China, to reverse anything. But I, I mean, I think it's a possibility that something like that could happen to see a reversal. So, so we'll keep on top of that.
All right. Item 13, again, Lauren, will give us a report on the 403B program, fourth quarter industrial performance report.
Thank you. So if we start on page three of the PowerPoint, this shows us the total assets within the program. So total assets at the end of 2020 were 27 million with 14.4 million in passive and 12.6 million in the active funds. If we move on to performance on page four, I think Elizabeth and Weston covered a lot of this, but equity markets continue to experience strong performance in the fourth quarter. And the S and P 500 was up over 12% and then finished the year up over 18%. If we look at the performance of the active managers, starting with securities, which also contributed to performance for both the quarter and for the full year. Moving down the line to the principal diversified real asset fund. The fund outperformed the benchmark for both the quarter and the year. Fund was up 10.8% as real assets showed really strong performance in the quarter. And their outperformance was really due to strong underlying manager performance, led by managers within infrastructure as well as natural resources. Next up, we have the Vanguard Windsor Fund 2. This fund outperformed their benchmark for the quarter and the year. And it was really strong stock selection within financials and industrials, which contributed to the relative returns for the quarter. Next up, we have T-Roe Price. So this fund did trailer benchmark in the quarter and for the full year. The fund's stock selection in both technology and consumer discretionary sectors really detracted from performance. And this is almost a story too. We see this with a lot of our managers. It wasn't so much, it's their holdings that underperformed, but a lot of times it's not holding certain names that detracted for performance. So for instance, for this fund, they didn't hold, say Tesla, which was up a lot in the quarter. So not holding that name detracted from performance. And they did actually outperform by almost 2% in the month of February. So we just received that report. So it looks like when some of the focus is more on the quality names and some of the tech names that maybe, you know, traded up a lot and they're starting to retreat, then it seems like that this fund tends to perform well. But in addition to performance, I did want to know, we were notified during the quarter that the portfolio manager for this fund, Larry Koolia, he will be retiring at the end of this year. We had initial call with T-Roe Price to review the change. And they've appointed an associate PM, Paul Green. He'll be taking over from Larry. And Paul has been working on the fund as an associate PM with Larry since December 2019. And the plan is to have him officially take over from Paul in October of this year. Paul has been with T-Roe Price for 14 years. And he was previously the lead portfolio manager for the communications and technology fund. And the way T-Roe Price is structured, they really, really, they have a global analyst research team covering stock across different sectors. And they're really the ones generating ideas. So with that, with that team intact and with Paul Green joining as associate PM, at this point, I think we're comfortable that we're not recommending any change. We'll continue to monitor the fund and see if there are any other personnel changes. But at this point, we think there's some consistency there with Paul having been with T-Roe Price for 14 years. So it's not like they're hiring someone from the outside to replace Larry. So we'll continue to monitor the fund and any other changes. We'll definitely inform the board. At this point, we're not recommending any changes. And then finally, we have DFA, their small cap portfolio, underperformed the benchmark for the quarter and the year. The firm continues to follow their quantity. The firm continues to follow their quantitative process, which excludes stocks that have both low profitability as well as high relative valuations. And, you know, we kind of just talked about this a bit, but many of these stocks that they're excluding are those stocks that have had strong performance, so those lower quality names outperforming, we wouldn't expect DFA to outperform in that type of environment. So we'll continue to monitor DFA, they did outperform the benchmark on the month of February, where you kind of saw a little bit of that rotation, and they outperformed in the month of February by almost 3%. So they will tend to outperform when the non earners and lower quality stocks are underperforming. So they remain on the watch list, we're not recommending any change at this point. Bailey Gifford, they did underperform the benchmark for the quarter, its growth retreated, but they did outperform quite significantly for the full year. And this one has exposure, we have the same account on the 401K 457 side, and this fund has exposure to e-commerce, as well as online entertainment companies, and some of those companies really outperformed, especially during the pandemic, so they continue to perform well. Happy to answer any questions on the 403B.
Lauren, I have one question. In, in reviewing the portfolios of each of the three funds that are a little bit in the red, are you comfortable with their portfolios?
I am. TRO Price, and you can even see the name, blue chip.
Chip, right.
Yeah, so they're gonna.
Ashlot.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, so they're, they're looking at things like quality of earnings, debt levels, and then evaluations get ahead of where they think they should be, you know, it's not something they would own or maybe even trim. So I think they were underweight Apple, and then, as I mentioned, they didn't own Tesla. So I think that's kind of the reason for the performance, but if you expect them to focus on sort of higher quality names that aren't overvalued, then I think they're performing as we would expect. And then DSA, I mean, their process, it's purely quantitative, so, you know, they don't have portfolio managers going in saying, do we think this is a good name? It's a purely quantitative process, and they're following it, it's just that they're excluding those, you know, lower profitability companies, you know, it almost even kind of goes to what Weston was explaining, with the non earners performing so well in this space, so they wouldn't be investing in any of those companies, and those are the companies that have outperformed. So I think we understand the reasons for the underperformance where you see it, but I'm comfortable that it, it still makes sense to, to keep the managers on the roster going forward.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? For Lauren? Okay, thank you, Lauren. Last item on the agenda, and the wrap up, is any public comment from anyone that's online?
Nothing I could mean.
No, no, we don't have any.
Yep, that's right.
Okay. Any final comments from the individual board members? Okay, hearing none, the chair will entertain.
Hold on, Mary, Mary, this is Steve. I just want to tag along on Mary's retirement and wish her well, in case we don't see her by chance before that happens. And just a parting comment to Nigel, and congratulations on the election, or for his nomination to the lottery board, and a nice parting venture would be to send all of the other board members a winning lottery ticket.
That'd be nice. Okay, Mary, are we going to be seeing you at the June meeting?
I have one more meeting, yes, I'm retiring in June and we'll be meeting in May.
Very good.
Unless Tom gives me the day off, I'll be here.
Who knows, maybe by then, we won't have to be so virtual, we can all get together.
Yeah.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Do we need to call the roll? No.
Do we need to call? Lawyer's saying yes. Melinda Barron. Michael Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, Nell Jerusalem.
Aye.
And Nigel Long.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Our next board meeting will be Thursday, May 27th at 9:00 a.m. Looking forward to hearing and hopefully seeing all of you back again. Thank you, bye-bye. Thank you.